Good morning. I'd like to call the Public Safety Committee for work session for June 26 to order. I'm Stephen Havy, your Chair, and the first thing we'll do, please, is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Havy.
Here.
Mr. Seer.
Present.
Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Demick.
Here.
Mr. Healy.
Mr. Rumfert.
Here.
Mr. Stocken.
And Mr. Harris.
Five present, two absent.
Thank you. This is actually our second public safety work session to examine a way forward for Allegheny County EMS services. At the first session, we asked for the EMS Advisory Board to review our EMS study and give recommendations that we could discuss today. Today, we have a lot of information coming to the committee, so please be ready to take notes. As you know, this subject has a lot of moving parts, so ask lots of questions. We will make no decisions today. On July 10, we will meet and again work on the framework of needed changes to our EMS system. Because we have a committee of the whole directly after this, we have to have a hard stop for 11 o'clock. My goal is to have us done and wrapped up by 10:50. In addition to our committee members, legislators, and our A-team, we have Bonnie Van Housen, our EMS coordinator, and multiple other titles. Kevin Waters, EMS Advisory Board Chair. Paul Weaver, past Chair of EMS Advisory Board. Brian Jones, EMS Advisory Board Member and Representative of E5 and EMS Staffing Company, and also Doug Wildermouth. Did I do it? Was it all right? Thank you. I knew I'd screw it up. Also from E5. And in the back, we also have Scott Lampier from Medical Transport. In your packet, you will find also, which is not being reviewed today, a proposal from Tom Samuelson from Mercy Flight. It came in late, and I wanted you to have a copy, but I don't think it's fair that we discuss it in depth unless he's here to answer questions. You will find it there. I urge you to look at it. We will see if we can maybe have him in first thing on the 10th for that meeting. Okay. Having said all of that, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have the presentation from the EMS Advisory Board on their recommendations. Who's going to do that? Kevin or Bonnie?
Kevin.
Tag team?
We'll both talk on it. Real quick, Tom Samson works for Mercy Flight, but he's also on EMS Advisory Board. Just two guys here. Okay?
Thank you.
I know a lot of legislators have come to the Advisory Board. You guys can see the conversations we've had. I want to start out with saying that you guys all know I work for MTS. I try to take that MTS hat off when I'm sitting on as Chairman of the EMS Advisory Board and try to really find what's best for the county. So, starting with the recommendations, number one thing that the Board had decided that the county should get a countywide CON. I'm going to go down through these. I'm going to go kind of slow. That way, if you guys want to stop and ask questions, Bonnie and I both can answer what we know, discussions we've had at the Board level. We've been on a talk on both sides of the county paying for employees and getting a staffing company to staff and serve for the service. I thought that this would be a savings for the county to use staffing for the company. Use a staffing company, sorry. It was suggested that there be a county-owned equipment. This means an ambulance and possibly a fly car. It was suggested to use proximity, closest proximity dispatch, which our CAD system is capable of, to find the closest staffed ambulance at any level for a call. Suggested that the county-owned service, whether the county-owned service, there could be standard of care required by QA and having some accountability to improve care. And that could be county, what the talks was, that could be countywide QA. It would give the county a lot of say in that. There needs to be EMS billing service hired to do the billing, as the EMS billing is much more complex. And it was talked about, you guys go out for RFP for that, to see what the county would like to do with that. Recruitment is still a large issue, a large part of the problems here. There are only so many providers to go around. If we don't get any more, we're only moving from place to place, and this is not a solution. Also, the county needs to get, needs to be willing to put some money and ideas into getting some more people to take courses and get certified, like that you guys have with the paramedic program. We need to, the talk was to try to extend that to the lower level certifications. It's believed that all ambulances need to have AVL, which is, so you can see where they're at for the proximity dispatching. Nurse triage, starting with the 911 center, nurse triage to help handle some lower-level calls. It's helped keep ambulances freed up from taking some calls that are not emergency calls. Be better handled going to a doctor or someplace other than an ER. From the survey, EMS leadership is a big issue in the county. There are two parts of this. The leadership, there's a leadership course that teaches leaders to be better listeners and being, and being a better leader. The second part in the leadership is the administration part. It requires all the paperwork to be done, and there's nothing to show them where or how to do it now. There's no standard of, also, all this, I mean, there's a lot of paperwork for EMS, so we deal with it every day. It's also suggested that EMS, we offer EMS classes, CFR and EMT in conjunction with businesses, as they could possibly get a tax break for having them in their buildings and could get someone to go volunteer with local fire and EMS agencies. Per call stipends has been recommended. Also doing more recruitment from the Bonnie's office, working on a video this time. If you want to talk, that's coming out of your office mainly.
The recruitment video, we are trying very hard to get recruitment from our office as well, but we're working on a video right now to interview people that have been, become into the EMS, and we want to know why, and maybe if other people hear their stories, they might do it as well. So, we're working on that from our office.
There was one more that I see didn't actually make this list, and that was to get Bonnie more help. She's very overextended, in our opinion, and she needs more help in her office. So, that's, that's what we have come up with recommendations. You guys have any questions on any of the things that we've, the Board has put forth? We can try to give you the general consensus of everyone, as we know.
This is your opportunity to ask questions, to have them clarify some of these bullet points. These are good bullet points, and we want to thank the Board for going through this and doing due diligence and putting in the time to give us these recommendations. This is what we need. This is why we need you guys. If there are questions, though, I would encourage, if something has a question on this group of recommendations, this would be a good time to ask.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Guess seeking some clarification on stipends. So, you're talking about stipends per call for volunteer agencies?
Yeah. It was kind of outlined the way Cuba does theirs. I know it's a little, I think their people are actually all employees of the township over there, and they get, I think it's a 20, is it $25 stipend or something, something around that?
Depending on the level of care and whether it's a sign-off or a transport.
Yeah, and it doesn't go, I don't believe it goes to, I can't speak completely on it, but I don't believe it goes to every call, but Cuba has a process already in place that they use that, so.
So, there is a way to do it. Because I had heard that, for some reason, in some instances, you're disallowed from providing stipends. Maybe that was on the fire side, I don't know, but.
I can't.
It depends on how it's written up. For County Cuba, like you say, they become their employees and they do, they have it sprayed out in a workman, exactly what they get, whether it's a, they get like $10 if they go and it's a sign-off, or they get like 20, 20 or 25 if they actually transport at BLS level. If it's an ALS level, it's like $40.
Do they bill? Does Cuba bill?
Yes, they do.
I think Mr. Weaver has a comment. Sir.
Yeah, if we can get a, Paul, if we could just, because if you're not on a mic, they can't hear you on the live stream.
So, I'm a former chief of E. Crandall in Alfred, and I know from my experience there that EMS agencies that are part of a volunteer fire agency are not allowed to provide stipends. I don't know how it is with independent EMS agencies, but I know absolute for a fact, if you're part of a volunteer fire agency, you can't have a stipend for anybody. We can't get paid per call.
Thank you.
I know we went through this last few times in Wellsville. We can't provide stipends because they'd have to be employees, we'd have to actually hire them, they wouldn't be volunteers anymore, and that's why we contracted out to do our ALS, because we can't have them, and we're talking about doing other stuff to contract out. But they can't be volunteers and get the stipend, they have to actually be sworn county employees, or the county's going to give it to them.
Yeah, I believe that's what a lot of the conversation was, you know, along with the CON, they could, they could technically be employees of the county and get a stipend that way. That was mainly the conversation.
Questions? Something else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll keep it rolling here.
Please.
One of the other sitting points I recall was the issue of, you know, if we, if we start utilizing, whether it's county employees or staffing that's being contracted by the county, inserting that labor into volunteer agencies where needed, that we would run into a problem where some, some agencies bill already, some are willing to bill if necessary, and others are absolutely not going to be interested in billing. And Alfred came up, Paul, because Alfred is subsidized by the schools. I think they feel as though they would run the risk of losing their school funding.
Correction, we're not subsidized by the schools, we contract with the schools.
Okay. Thank you. Same point. So, you would, I think there's a concern that they would lose their contract with the schools if they were billing for their services. So, has that been discussed with the EMS Board, and how do you solve that riddle?
It was discussed with the EMS Board, and I guess that would have to go on to kind of the county attorney, figuring out the legalities of the billing and how it would all work. I mean, it's, I don't know how many counties out there are doing billing for other squads, different agencies. I don't know that myself. I haven't been part of a county that does that, so I can't answer that. But I think you'd have to look at the legalities of what's legal and what's not legal for billing.
It also comes down to the fact that fire departments can bill, but I'm not sure if you can bill for them, or if they would have to be under, like, become part of the countywide system as well. So, all of those, like he said, are all legality. It's more the, these are ideas that came out that haven't been washed with the legalities.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Going along with that, I see on here you have using an EMS billing service, but there's no mention of the possibility of having a contract between the county and local ambulance services. That, I know that's something that's been discussed in depth, and that could help with the conversation of what you're talking about.
Right. And that's what we said about that, is for them to bill, it's a legal, it's going to be a legal question of how they can do that with each of the agencies, if they're already established, if they have to go under the county. So, it's going to be, it's a possibility, and it's something that's been talked about, but again, it's something that we have to talk about as far as legality of it, because there's some legality that has come out that is not, there's some things you can do and some things you can't do, so it's going to, it's going to call in some EMS lawyers to answer that.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Going off the topic of billing, I see you mentioned the leadership programs. Now, there was one in Oleen that used to do every year before COVID, because I remember we went to that one when we first got, or is there any way that we can work on starting that up in this county, or get the Oleen to start it back up and go to it, or?
Oleen's been doing it, but they're doing it virtual now, and they do it once a year. It's still there by the program agency. I would like to see it be offered in Allegheny County, which would be, it's quite an expense, though. It's like an $18,000 to $20,000 expense. So, that's one of the things, why we put it down, is that we would really like to see it in Allegheny County.
But that's something you could find out in budget for, because it's, I mean, Kevin and I went to it, it was really, really.
Yes, it is. It's very.
The virtual one's terrible. You can't pay attention to it, you can't, it's just, I tried to sit through the virtual one just to see the difference. The in-person one is actually, it was, learned a lot, helped a lot, and it was really, so I mean, the expense isn't really that bad at 18, 20,000 if it's saving our EMS, you know.
Right. And I agree with you 100%. I've taken both of them, and the in-person one, there's a lot more to it than, the online's nice, but online doesn't get that interaction that you get to find out different things, so I agree. So, yeah, that's why it's in here.
Mr. Harris.
Sir.
Last one.
Yes, sir.
The recommendation to use staffing as opposed to county employees, can you go a little bit more in depth into the why of that?
I believe that was mainly a cost savings. When you start doing county employees, obviously, the cost is a lot higher. That was the conversation piece that was had for that, mainly a cost savings.
Last chance. Anything else you'd like to add before we release you?
No. Obviously, as the chairman, you guys, you know, move forward, we can give you these recommendations. Whatever else you guys need help with, reach out to me or Bonnie, and we will continue our board on working on whatever issues are needed.
That's excellent. Once again, thank you for your efforts.
I have one question.
One second.
In regards to using staffing instead of county employees, and you're saying it's a cost savings, but is there enough staffing available within the system now?
The system, this is going to be more of my opinion, running, you know, around with everyone. I think the system as a whole is hurting with providers, and that's the biggest part, I believe, is getting more providers in the system. So, I think that should be, in my opinion, this is not as the Board opinion, but in my opinion, one of the higher priority items.
Right. And it really has been a priority. We understand that that's a problem, that's why I'm bringing up that question. So, are you looking at using the staff that we have now and subsidizing, the county subsidizing it with county employees? I mean, I.
There was, there were some talks, but the main thing we decided was, you know, when it comes to county employees and stuff, it's really the county's decision how they want to handle employees, you know. But, I mean, the main thing is, is just getting people in classes, trying to find, through recruitment and retention, trying to get more providers in the system. We do some recruitment retention. Obviously, we had a big one at the DWI drill. In my opinion, there was a lot of volunteer agencies that should have been there, got out, got their word out, said, listen, we need help. But I know there's some agencies in the county that don't like to bring on younger people, but they are our future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one more. Have you contacted, I know the EMS Bureau of EMS just launched the leadership training they're offering at?
Yes, I have. I've gotten in touch with Ryan. Actually, I was in touch with Ryan before that started. I was one of the ones that pushed for that to start. They have it in Rochester, and I'm trying to get it closer.
Okay. I get people listening that are asking me this.
Once again, last chance.
One more, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Please. Now that you're kind of finished with your recommendations based on the study, are you guys, as a board, going to start pivoting and looking at kind of refreshing those mutual aid agreements and all that? Is that your next order of business?
I believe that should come out of the OES office. I don't think that's something that's handled by our Board.
You just approve it.
Yeah, we just approve it in the end.
But it's on my desk.
It's OES that has to kick that off and get going.
Okay. Thank you.
Last chance, last chance. You sure? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, you guys. Much appreciated. We are up to the E5 presentation. Doug and Brian, who's going to do that? And I believe we have, I believe we have slides for that.
Excellent.
You guys looking at them? I'm easy either way.
Okay. If it happens, it happens.
Well, I'll tell you what. While we're figuring that out, I'll go ahead and say, yes, yeah, I was just about to do that. I wanted to say thank you very much for having us today to listen to what we have to talk about. My name's Doug Wildermuth, and I put some of our information in there. I'm the owner and team leader for E5 Sports Services. E5 is a staffing, consulting, and training business that has been in existence for 14 years. We identified that volunteerism, 14 years ago, we identified this, is actually going on a decline, and being a volunteer myself, we knew that we had to ensure that they are still around, but at the same time, ensuring that our communities receive an ambulance when calling for 911 was extremely important. So, we developed a staffing model that is legal compared to the Department of Health, excuse me, the Department of Labor, and looking at who and where our employees can work. So, consider us a contractor of not only volunteers, but creating a pool of employees in which we can go ahead and create new jobs within areas of the state. We started off with one client and 15 employees, and now we're up to 11 clients, 12 contracts, and over 85 employees, hope to be 13 clients next week. But at the same time, it continues to grow in six different counties in New York State. So, I do a lot of traveling. And, but that said, myself, I'm a retired trooper, and I have a lot of the teaching certifications and oversight within the Department of Health. I'm also a regional faculty member, which helps train other instructors across the state as well. But that said, I've been in EMS for over 30 years. I've been a medic for over 25 years, still nationally certified and write on our local ambulances. I'll have Brian introduce himself real quick.
My name's Brian Jones, excuse me, and I got my start in EMS here in Allegheny County, and I've got 29 years of EMS experience. As a whole, I've worked in several different systems, joined the E5 team a number of years ago, found the environment to be very pleasant to work for, and I love the fact that we're on the ground and trying to solve problems, and that's, that's what we do, is we work in and we solve problems for ambulance agencies and help volunteerism stay on the Board for as long as possible.
Thank you, Brian. So, building infrastructures, building teams, and building management systems is something that we do. And I'm not going to lie to you, there's some areas of the state where we've been introduced to committees and agencies like this that haven't been well-funded or not as organized as this, where we honestly told them, this may not be a good fit for you. But here, in Allegheny County, where we've already had some business here, I feel differently about that. I feel like this is a very promising future for not only the county, but for E5, the volunteers, and building the infrastructure of EMS, which has always been a mission of ours. So, that said, I'll move on to the first slide that's on there. We understand what your needs are within this county. We read the report. We understand, from Brian attending several meetings, what the nomenclature is, and we do agree that a municipal CON would be very purposeful and useful for you. That said, I think it's important to go ahead and crawl before you walk, and that's why I'm thinking about, just some ideas, idea sharing, a fly car and, you know, Monday through Friday, when the busier call volume is, to help the advanced life support features of the county, say if a BLS volunteer crew gets off and they need assistance, that car could be very useful, along with a 24/7 ambulance to help respond in those areas. Now, the strategic placement of those and technicalities, I feel, could be done later with your guidance as far as, and the committee's guidance, as far as exactly how that would be placed, but generally speaking, a fly car Monday through Friday and an ambulance 24/7, we can always build more into that. Staffing that, obviously, with clear transparency, would be something that our business is very interested in. It would reduce a lot of personnel costs for you. E5 does offer very comparable wages in the areas, or they can exceed them if the financial support is there. We don't tell you what the bottom line's going to be. We work together to come up with a good rate to pay the employees. We also have a 401K retirement system associated with it, all the disability workers comp and all the legalities that a good business should have, we do possess. That said, after pay raise, engagement and environment are the next things that any employee or volunteer are going to want to come to work. So, we feel we make that engaging work environment, from online social media campaigns to in-person having breakfast with me and the rest of our teams, to training. We feel that we engage our employees on a regular basis, and that's what we strive for. That makes us different. That said, billing. We understand that you want to get into billing, and there's, I think that's a very smart thing to do with a municipal CON. So, finding that right cooperative billing system and bringing it into your county so you can go ahead and see the finances come in is extremely important. I have many contacts around the state that own these types of businesses, so I can easily get you some information on which one you would prefer or the committee, but again, very accessible. I believe on the next page, after that, we have training. And in the training sector, it's one of my specialties. I've been training EMTs, well, actually, I've been training period since I started EMS. Needed a little bit of a clearer path, and my guidance counselor told me for every course that I take, I'm going to go ahead and take the instructor course and train others. That's why it's been a passion of mine, not only through the business, but all my years in the state police and the programs, EMS programs I've built there, as well as what we're continuing to do today, and another job that I possess at a university, making paramedics and EMTs. So, I agree with you. I think building that certified first response level with a lot of volunteers and firefighters to entice them into the medical field is a stepping stone to become an EMT, and then gaining more and more EMTs to become paramedics would be that next stepping stone. But that career ladder needs to go ahead and have the infrastructure, the good environment, and the good pay scale for members to stay in EMS and continuously go up that ladder. Advancement is also extremely important, according to a national study by the NEMT, for people to stay in EMS long-term. And anything that E5 could do to help support that with not only Allegheny County's EMS structure, the current one that they have, we'd be interested in helping support, but even the paramedic, satellite paramedic program. So, I actually know that program director as well. So, I think that's something that we can work with. We've done the CME program, if you're not familiar with that, that's continuing medical education credits or hours to go ahead and sustain everybody's involvement within the education system. We've been doing that for years. We certify 12 to 15 people individually per year from agencies all over that we have contracts with, as well as our own employees. We're very familiar with that. And, yeah, we can help. I mean, with whatever guidance that you might need, from paramedic to EMT, we can do that. Next, we have involvement in the local level, and I'll have Brian speak a little bit about this, but I think it's important to use our current and existing infrastructure as part of this solution.
One of the things that I think everybody in this room can agree upon is that we have resources in this county that are here and can be continued to utilize. I think the biggest resource that we need to bolster up is the obvious personnel issue, getting providers on the streets and doing the job. So, some areas are doing really well with that right now, some areas aren't, and they need to be geographically helped. The closest proximity dispatching and the IM responding that the county's putting in, they already have the ability to do that in the CAD system, as I understand it. So, that makes it, as we all get together and work as a team to make this entire system operate, instead of one person fighting against the other person, it's just one-team approach, and that's, that's one of the things that we want to acknowledge and bolster, if you will. The second half of this slide says continued MTS involvement. MTS is a, is a great resource in this county, and for a lot of years, I worked there. I believe I'm still technically on the books there, just for the record. So, we'd like to work with MTS to ensure that the critical hospital, critical hospital transports are being taken care of and that. that the critical hospital, critical hospital transports are being taken care of, and that they subsidize the 911 system where it's needed. I mean, we're talking about a 24-hour fly car, an ambulance, or, well, not a, one fly car, and then a 24 ambulance, seven days a week. So, that's not going to cover every call that we're currently missing. So, there is, I guess I just want to emphasize, this needs to be a team approach moving forward.
Thank you, Brian. I think it's important, you know, to give gratitude where it should be, and MTS has been a powerful, you know, agency here. So, with that respect, they need to be part of the solution. And the IM responding, I have another county that I've been working with in regards to highlighting their vehicles, and whether they're paid, volunteer, in-house, so dispatch can look to see who's going to be the next closest available unit with the GPS, and who's available staffing-wise, to get that, those resources there quickly. Because as we say in EMS, time is tissue, and we need to make sure that we take care of our communities. The next slide is a big one. Recruitment and retention is huge. We have not only a lot of experience within our management teams of E5, but personally, I have seen agencies go under, I have seen agencies flourish, and using those resources, I think, are extremely important, as far as not only getting people into the door, but most importantly, keeping them there. And that goes back to that engagement piece that I discussed earlier. I think it's extremely important to let everybody know how they're appreciated. Unfortunately, EMS is a thankless job, and we need to alter that. We need to go ahead and ensure that everybody, volunteer or paid, knows that they're appreciated, and make sure that we can get them whatever they need to do their job. And it sounds so simple, but you can ask anybody, when's the last time somebody thanked them for something? And they'll probably be scratching their head. That's also, both of these unique recruitment and retention visions are also part of good leadership. And EMS leadership is huge. The state course that came out in Rochester, I just sent one of our employees to, and I'm sending Brian out to Boston Spa later today, as a matter of fact, to participate in the other one. And these programs that are made by a friend of mine, they're very important. They're very important. The fire service has a ranking structure and leadership training. We don't have that in EMS. This is the state's first attempt to do something like this, and I think it's fabulous. Personally, I've cooperated for four or five years in the capital region, building our own EMS leadership program with a lot of colleagues. And when I moved two years ago, I've actually put that by the wayside, but to be quite honest, it would not be hard to go ahead and strike something like that up. Contact Ed with the Department of Health in this region and get some state resources in here. I'm sure you have valuable county resources that we can include on these teams. The programs are built, we can instill them locally, and they will get not only good leadership training, but excellent communication skills from that. Those can be done virtually, and I think if you instill them quarterly, you'll see over time that these things will change EMS for the better. Last slide, I believe, I think we need to stop lying to ourselves with some of our volunteer agencies that need assistance, and we need to sit down with them and their leadership and say, where are we at? What are your strengths? What are your weaknesses? What opportunities are around us, and what threats are there? To go ahead and illustrate how maybe some of them should be coming together to help support the bigger cause in their communities, and/or bolstering them individually, and/or, quite honestly, if they can't function anymore, maybe create an infrastructure that can service that area in order to go ahead and say, maybe we should close our doors. I know that's not something that anybody wants to hear, but we need to be practical and realistic about where we are today. And EMS is a very fluid process. And then, meetings like this, meetings of the minds, these regularly have to be conducted. And we, as I was speaking with Gretchen earlier, this is a very fluid service. We need to be manageable. We need to work together in order to go ahead and see what hiccups come up in the road, and share these ideas with each other to get to the best possible solution. That said, I think the last slide is where my contact information is. That's a lot of our leadership team there. If you should need anything, feel free to contact me from the information that's provided there. It's on the internet as well, so I go ahead and invite you to go to our page, e5supportservices.com for any more information. But, sorry for taking so long. If there's any questions and answers.
That was a good presentation. I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you guys are operating across the state, so you probably have a better idea than we do. But, we hear anecdotes about some of these counties that are right on, just in the process of standing up their own services, like Wyoming comes to mind, Wayne County, I think Stubein is on the cusp. What we're hearing is that they're, they're offering exorbitant wages, hourly wages, to providers to entice them to come in. Are you encountering problems with that within your own business, losing employees to these, these counties that are just kind of paying to the moon? And, and what would you, you know, we're concerned as Allegheny County, if we're surrounded by Wyoming, Livingston already has one, Stubein soon too, how do we ensure that we retain either, you know, our own county employees, or if we contracted with somebody like you, how do we ensure that you have enough providers to provide the service?
It's a great question. And as Kevin mentioned, the pool right now is not big, or thick, for that matter, but we need to go ahead and do our best. Top pay, yes, that's the number-one item that any provider will look at. And sometimes, it could be our own worst downfall as well, because the employee's going to go elsewhere. But, how different is that with any other high-paying job, when you want to go ahead and advance yourself and get some more money for your own family? It comes with the trade. It is something that's going on right now, I'm not going to deny it. But that's why we harp on the engagement and the good atmosphere at which one works. We work with our clients on a regular basis and their board of directors to go ahead and improve the environment in which they're working for them to keep coming back. And loyalty is very big with our company, and if you look at our roster, you'll, yes, we have new employees, but you'll see that a lot of them stay with us because we're emphasizing the other areas besides pay. But, again, if you can afford it, we can attract those people back too.
Do you, do you adjust your, your wages based on the area you're working in, across the state?
We sit down with our clients, and we typically sign annual contracts, and during that annual review, we'll go ahead and say, are you interested in giving them a raise? And that fluctuates. It makes it fluid, it makes it advantageous to our employees as well, knowing that if you signed a contract every year, that's something that you can go ahead and work towards, another raise and what have you. However, if you wanted to instill raises within the contract, you can do that as well. That's something we can work with.
Yep, thank you.
Of course.
Other questions? Mrs. Henshaw.
If we were to contract with you, how much time is spent in working within it? Is it just once a month? Is it ongoing? Is it, I mean?
Sorry, maybe you can ask that question again, how much time?
How much time does your company spend within putting the system together? What are we contracting?
Are you talking about setup?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, depending upon the size of it, I'm going to guess 20 to 25 employees for something like this to start, that would probably take two, three months, get that going.
And I guess I'm trying to understand exactly what you do. I mean, I'm looking in here and how we work with what we have. Do you, are you anticipating using some of our volunteers coming on, and then putting them back in, or?
Our primary goal for this particular project would be to create a new pool of employees, basically bring a new job to the area. So, from that, anybody that's working at other areas as well can, can look around and say, hey, there's a county I want to work for, we'll work, we'll submit an application in through E5. Now, that said, I believe we're one of, I'm going to err on the side of caution, four staffing agencies or models that I know about across the country that don't own an ambulance and only do staffing. And we can legally hire volunteers. So, some of them that wish to work in their own station, maybe during the daytime, and then turn around and volunteer at night, will help sustain that ambulance get off, because they're contributing themselves intrinsically, but at the same time during the daytime, they can get a little extra as well.
And that might be a little bit more sustainable for our volunteer ambulances, too. That's what I was trying to figure out, how it worked.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
Jan.
I'm a, I'm a little confused, but that's okay. So, my question, I guess, is, if you hire volunteers, what incentive would them, be for them to continue to be volunteers in their local ambulance company if they're now going to work for you under this organization and get paid? Why would they continue to volunteer, and is there the risk of maybe some of the voluntary ambulance corps then closing?
So, there's an intrinsic value to volunteering. That's why I still volunteer today. And those people that have that fire inside them, those are the ones that are going to stick around and continue to do it. What volunteers are staying and going, that's a great debate that we could probably talk about at another time, because we're hurting. But I think we'd all agree, they're on a decline, and we don't want that. But we have to be practical, and that's the way it's going. So, if you do have the one or two volunteers that turn around and say, well, if they're going to get paid for it, I'm not going to volunteer anymore, I have two questions. One, did you lose that fire inside? Or two, was he or she going to go anyway? So, this is just to help subsidize it a little bit, and to keep some of that going.
I think I can elaborate on that for Jan, too. In Wellsville, we use E5, and we've actually gained volunteers. E5 employees have actually came and actually started volunteering with us and said, and then we've also had people that wanted to work for E5 that upped their certification so they could. We just had one employee, one volunteer, she worked for E5, the basic just raised her, and we gave her a raise. We asked E5 to give her a raise, and we approved it. But, we've actually gained volunteers, because people that have worked for E5 have come down to Wellsville to work, and then they've actually said, oh, we like this, and started volunteering with us, too.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Ricky.
What's your, excuse, excuse me, what's your record with your billing companies and actually collecting?
So, we're per se not a billing company, but we do go ahead and work with our clients and the billing companies they use to establish what their ALS-1 rate is, their ALS-2, their BLS rate, their mileage rate, whether they're maximizing on that. Actually, speaking with another potential client later today in regards to doing bookwork, and helping them help themselves. So, just to be clear, we're not a billing company. I just have a lot of friends that own billing companies. But working with the management to ensure that you maximize that, or maybe some agencies don't want to maximize that. They want to take it easy on their billing, their, their community members. That's also something that they can do if they wish. You're welcome.
Anybody else? It's a very good presentation. Thank you. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Now, up next, we have Mr. Paul Weaver. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I think I know most of you on the committee, but for those of you who don't know me yet, just a quick intro. I'm Paul Weaver. I'm from Alfred. I became a member of A E Crandall Hook and Ladder right as soon as I turned 18, back in 1986. I haven't been there the whole time, though. I ran away to the Army for 20 years. In that, I held a variety of leadership and training positions. I retired as a sergeant first class in the end of 2011, came back to Alfred and jumped right in, getting my EMS certifications back, and it's a firefighter there. And ever since, I've been in leadership roles everywhere, from truck and EMS captain, up through chief and assistant chief. I'm currently a truck captain, and trying to hand things off to some other folks to get the experience spread around. The presentation I put together is strictly my opinions, after looking at some systems that are around the area, at what has been working and not working in Allegheny County. And I'm, I'm looking, I think, at a slightly broader approach than, than the gentleman from E5, or even the EMS advisory board's full recommendations brought forward. I think that it's important, as we go forward, that we really need to look in a very holistic manner at the entirety of things, because there's so many moving pieces that, that affect this. We can't, for example, simply look at staffing, or billing, or recruitment retention, but we have to look at a wide variety of topics. Next slide, please. Primary goals, first and foremost, and I think that, that we need to keep this in our mind, as the overreaching ideal of whatever system is put in place, is to provide high-quality EMS coverage and care to the residents and visitors in Allegheny County, full stop. Okay? If we're not meeting that, then we are failing our residents. Ideally, going beyond that, we should utilize existing structures to bolster the proposed county system, supporting the efforts of volunteers, and incorporating already existing paid staffing models. And I think we need to look at flexibility. Some of the attempts to, to address problems that were made in the past didn't have anywhere near enough flexibility built into them, so making adjustments as things inevitably change over time has been difficult. So, particularly with things like the dispatch system, they, they looked at addressing a need, but what they put in was very rigid and inflexible, and ended up, I think, causing some problems, rather than simply serving as a fix. This flexibility should also reflect down to things like agency staffing, response capabilities, funding, and all these things. My basic vision, I think the county should get a MUNICON, a municipal certificate of need, and run a county EMS agency. I think this should be a base vision that I think would work, although some, some real tight analysis is always called for, would be three basic life support ambulances staged around the county, answering 911 calls, ideally doing zero to very few interfacility transports, and probably two ALS fly cars to cover the county's needs for advanced life support care. I think we should have a revamped county dispatch plan, encouraging and supporting EMS agencies, and maximizing the use of mutual aid when available, which is a current limitation of the current plan, and again, increasing flexibility to make the best use of limited resources as they exist. The current commercial agencies, E5 and MTS, that are operating in Allegheny County, obviously have the right to continue to operate. In my vision, and this is obviously not a dicta to a separate business, but I think MTS could return to its roots as a BLS and ALS interfacility transport, going from, say, Jones to Strong in Buffalo, to the big hospitals there, and also doing take-home calls, bringing patients back home when they can't, you know, get into the car and manage it by themselves. They have some current 911 contracts with Angelica and Friendship, and obviously, you know, they're allowed to maintain those. And they're available on-call for special event contracts, things like the county fair that they do such a great job on, other large events that they provide good coverage for. They could be available as a backup for overflow needs, for things like 911 calls, if things are just getting really crazy in the, in the county. But I think that, that shifting their focus to, to doing the interfacility would probably work better for them. E5, continuing essentially unchanged, and once again, both available to supplement county needs as they come up. Slide, please. The county agency, three BLS ambulances. I have a very, very strong preference for the full-size box ambulances, as opposed to trying operating in the back of a van, and especially if you're going long distances, doing work on major trauma patients, working a cardiac arrest call, things like that. There are times when you need a lot of mobility around the patient, and sometimes you need to pack a lot of bodies in the back of the ambulance. I know Scott and I have taken a couple of calls where we've had six or seven EMTs in the back of a truck, and we're all working our butts off trying to save that patient. I would envision staffing these basic ambulances with two EMTs or eight EMTs, advanced EMT. I don't think it's the most efficient use of resources to have a driver whose only ability is to drive the truck. I think you get a lot more flexibility. If everybody is an EMT, you can flip roles back and forth during the course of a day. You can flip rolls back and forth during the course of a day or, you know, or from different shifts, and it, it makes the on-scene care just that much faster and more efficient if, if both providers can work on the patient. Initial staging, staging locations, gonna, again, take some pretty careful pattern analysis. There's tools available. There's open source stuff. I know, I know from my time in the Army that pattern analysis can yield some really incredibly detailed results. But I would anticipate as, as a starting point, maybe stage one in West Almond, one down in Bolivar, one up in Houghton. Shift these around as, as needed during the course of a, a work shift, you know? So if the truck from Bolivar goes out of service, maybe we shift the West Almond one in closer to the center of the county or even stage them a little bit south, things like that. And continuous call pattern analysis moving forward. None of these plans should be static and carved and granite, but there should be flexibility inherent to the system. Come back, please. Two ALS flycars. These would be staffed with a single paramedic or critical care EMT while they're still letting critical cares work. A gripe I have with the state, but we've lost that fight. I think that initial staging locations for them could be in Angelica and down at Jones Memorial or elsewhere in Wellsville. Okay, next slide, please. Changes into the dispatch system. Again, maximize and reward volunteer agencies and increase flexibility. Like the gentleman from E5 said, and forgive me for forgetting your name, but it's my superpower. Doug, okay. Volunteers do it because we love to do it, but sometimes we get the feeling that we're not appreciated enough and people get sore feelings. And unfortunately, when the current county dispatch plan was put in place, there were, there was a need to, to make some changes to it because there were times when, when some agencies weren't getting out the door. The system that was in place then would roll the call after 10 minutes to a, a mutual aid agency, and then if that one didn't get out the door, it might roll to the next mutual aid agency. And so there were, there were times when the, the time from first call until a, a truck was actually on the road was really quite extended. So they put the current plan in place, which says certificate of need trumps everything and either it's your agency or a countywide staffed agency to get the call, or both at the same time in, in many cases. And they threw away all the mutual aid plans. So, even though, for example, Alfred, I know the numbers best because I live there and I've crunched the numbers for years now, even though we're right next to Almond's and we're right next to Andover, they couldn't respond to us, we couldn't respond to them, even if we had personnel and rigs available because of the, the mutual aid plans getting thrown out the door. It, and it, it would have, for example, an MTS ambulance driving from crossroads with a time to Alfred of about 10 to 12 minutes versus, you know, maybe one could be there from Andover in eight minutes. So, I know a lot of volunteers got kinda fed up and said, "Well, what the heck, you know? If I can't even, I, I don't wanna just serve my community, I wanna serve my neighbors as well," you know? I think that we should do real analysis on, on call responsiveness of agencies. Some agencies do a great job getting out the door. Some agencies are struggling. Some agencies are at a point of failure, as Doug pointed out, and we need to be honest with them and, and with everybody that, you know, it, it's lovely to be aspirational, but if you're only making three calls a year and you're getting toned for 50, you know, you're, you're not providing the service. So I think a countywide EMS integration with county, this county agency that I, I'm proposing to be built, getting sent on the very first tone to the agencies that struggle to make their calls, to make sure that this timely care is provided. Agencies, BLS agencies that have a good call coverage, the countywide ALS will get toned immediately to support them if they're needed. And county agencies don't have to get dispatched to agencies, either BLS-level calls or ALS-level calls, that, that have a good record of meeting their calls. You know, there's no reason to waste the gas driving halfway across the county to cover a call that's going to be covered in, in the vast likelihood by the home agency. You know, save that, save that fuel, save the wear and tear on the vehicles. And then in some areas, you know, a, a committee might say, "You know what? We make all our calls." For example, Belfast, great record of, of making a very high percentage of their calls. But there's some parts of their territory that they just can't get to in a timely manner, so maybe they say to this county EMS agency, "Hey, let's, let's write up a, a contract, a treaty, whatever the term that, you know, the state is using, and say, 'You guys,' the county agency gets to cover this select geographical area." And then agencies that have a strong record of covering their own calls, we, we encourage, again, that the mutual aid plans come into effect. There've been many attempts over, over the past eight years or so that this county dispatch plan that's in effect has been there, where some of us have tried to put in mutual aid plans, again, to get back to what we were doing, and the paperwork just seems to have evaporated. And I know that Bonnie's talked about, you know, Office of Emergency Services, getting that back on priority, and I think that that's something very important to, to drive for. Funding and cost analysis, and I may have screwed up here because I actually looked at some of the numbers, and I noticed neither one of my, of the other people briefing did that, but I think that these are important to consider. It, it's not a one-for-one comparison and none of these numbers are hard numbers. These are, are very, very much back-of-the-envelope estimates. I would not be at all shocked to see that my estimates were off by 50% one way or the other. Okay? But I think, I think it's at least a reasonable point to move forward in, in thinking about what things might look like. Salary, you know, we'd need three shifts of two EMTs per ambulance plus two more, eight EMTs or paramedics on the flycar, full benefits, highly competitive salary, you know, minimum of 20 to 25 an hour, might even need to go further. A friend of mine's working up with one of the counties in the Avon region for an agency there, and he's making 29 an hour as a paramedic. Total cost, maybe about a million and a half a year. I think money, and, and as much as we love to volunteer, if you're talking about getting people for a paid job, money is the primary focus. You know, benefits are important, vacation is highly important, a good working environment can't be overstated like Doug was talking about with his company. But, you know, if we're, we've got this limited pool in Allegheny County, if we recruit from within entirely, we're just gonna end up eating our own, so we need to look at, try to entice people to come in from out rather than are people going away to work at, at better jobs there. Funding would come primarily from billing supplemented with county funds. As a general cost comparison, I looked at what Livingston County is doing. They're geographically smaller, higher population. They do do interfacility transports. They have higher staffing requirements than we do. Their annual operating cost is 2.8 million, of which the county's only responsible for 700,000. They're getting the majority, about, you know, three-quarters or so of their funds from the billing that they're doing in their service. Now, Livingston County is a lot different economically than Allegheny County, and this has to be taken into consideration, but, but we should be able to assume a, a reasonable percentage of funding needs are, are gained from that. Allegheny County is currently funding MTS to the tune of 1.08 million in a year, so even without doing the interfacility transports that brings MTS a fair chunk of change, county EMS should be able to provide ongoing care with increased responsiveness and maybe even a slight or moderate cost savings as compared to what's going out the door right now. A couple of things I considered that, that I didn't get up on a slide, but I do wanna talk about. I thought about some other options of what could, what we could do as a county to provide services. For example, going with a staffing agency, handing it over to Jones Memorial and saying, "Figure it out." You know, there are hospital-run EMS agencies elsewhere in the state. Some of them are quite successful, some of them less so. I think a couple of the, the primary reasons I turned against that, and I think that a county-run EMS system would be best, you know, county-run and operated, boil down to, to kind of a integrity and accountability. One of the problems with hospital-based systems is they tend to work with their own hospital's needs in mind. We see this a lot when patients are getting transferred out of Jones Hospital. They go to another University of Rochester facility as their very highest priority, even though, for example, you know, I, I've taken patients, when I, when I worked for MTS, I've taken patients from Jones up to the catheter lab up in Rochester when the catheter lab over in Oleann is, you know, half an hour closer. And cath lab for, for cardiac issues, cardiac cath lab. So, with, with, any time you're outsourcing to another organization, especially a commercial organization, to, to run your systems for you, there's questions of accountability of, you know, not only just fiscal accountability and transparency, but also accountability in terms of staffing management issues and things like that. So I think a lot of these issues could be addressed by having the county own and run their own system. But again, I wanna, I wanna wrap up by saying the primary goal, and it's number one on my list as a reason, and I think in the final analysis, it is the only thing that, that needs to be kept in mind, is providing high-quality EMS care in Allegheny County. That has to be what we're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Questions? This should have generated some questions. It was very well done, by the way, that presentation, and I thank you for that. I know a lot of time went into that. Questions? Are you getting out of this clean?
Mr. Harris, you disappoint me, sir.
I'm getting tired. We have one. Mrs. Burdick.
Hi, Paul.
Hi.
My question is, if you go to a countywide ambulance, would there continue to be any volunteer ambulances? Or would, I mean, it would all just be countywide now? There would no longer be?
No, I'm sorry, may, I, I didn't explain that at all well. No, my vision is all the EMS agencies currently around the county continue to operate as they are. The, the countywide one is kind of an overlayment on top. They can respond to anywhere in the county, but they have agreements with every community that has their own EMS services to determine how best to provide that community service. And then you do the analysis on how each community is providing care. If they're doing really, really well, if, if they're responding, I don't know, ballpark numbers, 90% maybe of their own calls within the first eight minutes, they're getting a truck out the door, people like Alfred, like Belfast, then you say, "Okay, great. You got it." You know, "Call us if you need help," basically. If they're kind of in the moderate range, you know, Houghton and Fillmore come to mind, Cuba comes to mind, where they're, they're getting most of their calls, but maybe in that, you know, 70 to 90% window ballpark, then you come up with an agreement to help subsidize them and maybe get a truck on the road a little earlier so that any delay doesn't result in a significant delay in patient care. And then for the communities that are really, really struggling to get out the door, either because they're super small and they're in a rebuilding phase like Almond is, or like Friendship, where they have one or two providers that have two-day jobs and they're just not making it, then, well, Friendship's not a great example because of MTS's contract, but there's other communities that have that, that, you know, maybe, maybe the county says, "Hey, you know, let, let's, let's face the reality here and maybe it's time, you, you can still get out the door. If you get in your truck and you get rolling, then sure, you get the call, you know, you've got the right to, but we're gonna send a county ambulance to the call first thing as soon as it comes in."
Mrs. Hampshire.
So I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, and I don't know if, right now, we have community, townships, communities that are contracting with other agencies. And so when you look at how the county puts together theirs or your vision, so would the county then be contracting with each individual agent or township municipality? And then there's a conflict with that, or, I mean, how do you, I'm trying to see how that's gonna look?
I don't think it necessarily needs to be a, a contract per se. If the county has a countywide certificate of need, you know, the municipal con, then, you know, you could just respond. You could respond to every call. Now, if you just started jumping everybody's calls, that ticks everybody off. So, then you, this is where we do this analysis and we have a lot of conversations. And, you know, you bring in every agency and say, "Okay, this is, this is how you're gonna fit in, this is what we're looking at with your pattern analysis, and this is how the dispatch plan," because remember, we wanna, we wanna look at revamping that, "this is how we dispatch various trucks to it." And it can be looking at, at AVL to determine who's available and stuff like that, or it could just be predetermined based on the fact that, "Hey, Alfred gets out the door, we're not gonna bother sending a truck there, it's a waste of diesel fuel," you know? Or, "This other agency doesn't get out the door, we're gonna send a truck first thing to make sure somebody's caring for that patient."
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ah, yes, sir. Mr. Harris.
I knew you'd come up with something.
Yeah, so just so, I, I'm curious your, your thought on this. So, with MTS, one of the concerns that's expressed to the board is that the county is contracting with MTS to provide services in general in specific locations where there aren't strong volunteer agencies. So somebody in Alfred or Wellsville or Belfast will say, "Why are we essentially subsidizing EMS providers to Friendship and Angelica when we cover our own territory, but our tax dollars are still going towards this contract with MTS to cover all the areas that aren't covering their own township?" That we, we would encounter the same problem with a county-run ambulance, where it would be, we would always be responding to the Friendships and the Angelicas and, and those areas that don't have coverage, and the Wellsvilles and the Alfreds are gonna say, "Well, we're still doing our job, but we're still paying the bill." So, how would you address that concern from somebody if it was brought to you?
Yeah, okay, yeah. And, and you know, that's, that's a difficult nut to crack. I know any time anybody says anything about spending tax dollars, you know, people, you know, red flags go flying up and, and why should my tax dollars go to that? Part of it, I think you, you show high levels of professionalism and transparency and all those things to reassure everybody their tax dollars are not being wasted, and there's no question that anybody could have on that, not to say that they are now, but partly you, you find out maybe other ways that you could get some in-kind compensation for the communities that are already covering their, their needs, or, you know, find other ways to reward them. And partly, you engage in a massive PR campaign and you say, "Hey, look, people, it's good to be concerned about your community, but your community does not stop at the village line. You know, this isn't medieval times when we had fortress walls around our community and you throw your garbage over the wall and that's where it ends. Part of our community is Allegheny County." And people live here because they like the things that are available in Allegheny County. You know, it's hard to say, "Hey, I, I wanna go to the county fair every year, but I don't wanna support the ambulance coverage that covers the community where the Allegheny County Fair is held every year, and I don't wanna cover these other communities where the farmers who live and work here are actually living and working that bring their animals to the county fair," you know? So, I think that we sell this as, as a, "We're doing our best for Allegheny County," and we all come together in this way.
Okay.
I tried that one, it didn't work.
Yeah, that's a tough question.
Yeah.
And I think the PR piece in that is very important. I think you're right.
And on top of that is, like, say, these, these ambulance squads that actually get out the door, most of the time, they don't get out 100% of the time. So there are times that they are gonna need.
Absolutely.
I'm a member of two of them that we get out 80 to 90% of the time, but those 10% of the time, if we're not providing the other service, who's gonna cover?
Sure.
You know, and, and we had a, the other day, we had one where the mutual aid plan You know, and we had, the other day, we had one where the mutual aid plan we used to have came into effect, because even MTS didn't have an ambulance available at the first, and I think they toned a couple departments before they finally got somebody. So if we don't do this, we're not going to have the coverage. We don't do something, something.
And that circles around to what I think is very important in looking at the county dispatch plan, is maximizing flexibility into it, and not going with a limited, you know, A or B approach, but having lots of options available. And we can look at other things, you know, Kevin was talking about, you know, uncalled dispatching, you know, looking at which trucks are available on the AVL, and just sending the nearest agency, you know, no matter what. Things like that will definitely help. I think nurse triage is something that this has to be built in. I think we could, we could lop off a good, probably 10% of our 911 calls just by having a nurse on the phone saying, no, you really don't need an ambulance, and we're not going to send you one because, you know, this is something that can wait till you get to your doctor, or, gee, you know, why don't you just lie down and go to sleep for a little while, and I think you'll feel fine, you know. But we need a nurse who can say that. I've said for a long time in Alfred that we need a dedicated mommy line for the students to call to say, yeah, you know, you'll be okay, honey, you don't need to go to the hospital today.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Barnes, no questions?
I'm thinking about it.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that.
Maybe just one quick comment for the committee's consideration. I'm maybe not as optimistic about the financial side of it when you compare it to Livingston County. I think, I would guess, a majority of the revenue they get to offset the county share is through their transports. And if we, as a county, aren't interested in getting in the transport business, all that revenue will be unavailable to us, and it will all shift to county share. And in general, and you guys know better than I do, but if I think about it, I just, with Livingston County's proximity to Rochester, I think they have actually, even being closer, more opportunity for revenue and transports, just hopping on 390 and shooting back and forth to Rochester every day than we do down here.
Undoubtedly, they get a larger percentage of their income from those interstate transports, but they're also staffing at a much higher level than I'm looking at us needing to do here, so their costs are significantly higher as well. So I think in the end, that it would still balance out. And as it is now, Allegheny County's payments to MTS are about, you know, 30% higher than the input that Livingston County is putting into Livingston County's EMS system. So I think in the end, the numbers will come out fairly comparable, or even maybe a slight.
And we need to consider, I mean, there's startup costs, there's one-time startup costs.
Oh, the startup cost is going to be huge. You know, you're going to have to buy three ambulances plus one spare, because you've got to rotate them in for regular maintenance. You're going to have to fully equip them, which is insanely expensive. The defibrillators alone are going for $50,000 each. You've got to equip the fly cars with everything else. The startup cost, if you get it under $3 million, I'll be shocked. If you get it over $5 million, I'd be a bit surprised if it's over that. So, but...
Chairman, I have one more question.
Yes, Mrs. Hanscher.
So it's been brought up at some of our discussions, too, about having, if we had a county CON or a place where supplies, that a lot of the medications expire, and a lot of them are wasted, if, that would probably save us money if it was in one spot and people couldn't?
That, I think that could be really useful.
Or fees, I don't know if it's fees.
Some of the, the easy supplies, the non-prescription stuff is easy, and having bulk ordering, I mean, the companies are shoving all the agencies to bulk order anyways, so if I want one oxygen mask, I have to buy 10 or 100. So having a central repository, and then everybody could say, hey, you know, I need five masks, and they come up, and the billing happens to the home agency, you know, from the county, that could definitely help things out quite a bit. As far as prescription drugs, it gets a lot trickier, especially when it comes to things like narcotics, but even prescription drugs in general, because they're prescription, and you can't just sell your stuff to somebody else. So, but I think that there are legal frameworks that are available for that, that a giga could fall into that. And then another thing that could help spread the cost burden, and this could help some of the communities that don't really want to be a part of this, you know, countywide thingy that's not helping them out, is billing. If the county is contracting with a outside billing agency, which I absolutely think they should, because reinventing the wheel in a complex environment like medical billing is silly, then they could also offer to have the various agencies around the county join in with that. And, you know, instead of each agency contracting themselves with a billing agency, everybody could jump onboard the countywide plan, and I think that that could save some money, too.
Okay. Jan?
Correct me if I'm wrong. If we went with E5 contracted with them, we would not have to do any of this as far as equipment, supplies, you would provide all of that? Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure I...
Yeah. An agreement would have to be made as far as, you know, who's going to purchase what. If it's going to be county-run, or county-owned, I should say, then I would only think it's fair that those decisions are made through the county. We can help guide and that kind of thing, but we can, you know, consult, but honestly, this is a county decision, so I would feel improper buying all that for you unless it was part of the package. Just, those are details we can work on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Anything to add, Paul? Anything at the end?
No, thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you very much for coming in. Very well thought out, and we do appreciate it. Okay, we are down to something called open discussion and questions. There have been a lot, a lot of questions, but we could do an open discussion if anybody wanted to talk about any of this. Yes, Mrs. Burdick?
I'm just curious if we have a timeline of when we would like to have something decided upon, and then a timeline of when it will be actually enacted. And because we've been talking about this, we know there's a desperate need in Allegheny County. So I'm just curious, okay, we've got all this information, what are we going to do with it, and when are we going to do it?
As far as this committee is concerned, we're going to have another meeting at 10:00 AM on July 10th here in the chambers. And we're going to attempt to get as far as we can to talk about a framework for EMS. So to answer your question truthfully, I don't know how long that's going to take, but we're going to keep devoting meetings to it until we come up with something we can use. I do believe we can make some meaningful progress on the 10th, but I don't want anybody to put any money on the fact that we're going to have it fixed on the 10th. Yes, ma'am? Bonnie, something? No?
I just wanted to remind everybody that it's also going to be a work in progress. Whatever we decide, it's going to be changeable, because Paul's one thing that I will, fully, fully think, is that we have to be flexible to change, because there's not going to be a one fix to this.
That's absolutely true. And once we get rolling with this, and as we implement different phases of this, and we find that things are working, we will find things that don't, and we will fix them. And I would just like to head off anybody thinking that, ah, yeah, I knew that wouldn't work, okay. Because this is a work in progress. As Bonnie said, this is all very fluid. When we make a mistake, we fix it. The important thing when you make a mistake is not that you made it, it's what you do next. And so we're going to live by that principle, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Healy?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments here. Regarding the Livingston County versus Allegheny County comparison, the demographics are completely different up there, the makeup of their county, the socioeconomic makeup of their community is quite a bit, quite a bit different, and so is their tax base, I would dare to guess. As in all things, the state has created a lot of these issues, both in the training requirements for all our volunteers, on both the fire and EMS levels, and, which has made it difficult, also in their other policies that have decimated upstate New York and the socioeconomic makeup of our communities. A lot of the medical transports, I don't know what percentage, you said maybe 10% are not needed calls. That might be true in Alfred. I think it's probably, my sense is, it's probably a little bit higher than that. And a lot of our trans calls are also, I'm guessing, are Medicaid calls, which, they're getting, the state hasn't been our friend there. Because the reimbursement to us, the county, is one of the biggest single items in our budget, if not the biggest item, is the Medicaid cost. Most states reimburse totally, your local governments, New York State doesn't even come close. And I guess the last thing I would say is that, I think, you know, the state should be involved more in this, in their state leadership, and those problems, we all should look at it collectively to try to, and this includes our state leaders, and when most of them are from New York City, they don't have any concept of what the real needs are here in upstate New York. But they should, and they should buy into this, and we should try to come up with a good solution for everybody. And that also includes the hospital. I'm kind of disappointed that we don't have more buy-in from the hospital. I know that they're talking about expanding their services and opening up more satellites. It seems to me that that'd be a logical partnership, that they should have a seat at the table and be more involved. And we might be able to come up with a model that would be the most efficient, both in providing services and economically, that we might actually get some additional funding for as a model that other counties and other areas could look at and piggyback on. So I think we all want a good and positive solution, and I look forward to working with everybody on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Other discussion? Anything?
I'm ready.
Oh, Mr. Barnes is ready. Mr. Barnes, go ahead, sir.
And my comments are more questioning. My military and pilot, commercial pilot background, we had a lot of acronyms that everybody that was, you worked with, knew. This particular subject, there's a lot of acronyms and so on and so forth that are being thrown around. I had the slightest idea what you're talking about half the time. I think it would be nice if you could put, when you put together one of these sheets, they're very informative, but a little side sheet that breaks down all the ALS and BLMs and whatever else. It would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Someone else? We have time. Now it's time to ask your questions or enter into a discussion. Mr. Harris, you have anything?
I wonder, only because we do have time and because Scott is here.
Yeah.
I wonder if he might be interested, only if you're interested in providing your thoughts on what you've heard today. I'm not saying shoot holes in it all, but maybe any red flags you want to make us aware of, or things we're not considering.
I think it's a great idea. Welcome, Scott.
Welcome, good morning. I think that all the plans, the best-laid plans for the Allegheny County EMS system are not out there. We have to make them. We have worked hard meshing the system together to have what we have, and I think it's going to continue to be that way. I don't think, our county is not a one-solution, fits-all, you know, rubber stamp that this plan works. So from our agency's perspective, we've worked very hard with the volunteers for 43 years, almost 44 years in September, to be a good partner, and, you know, we try to continue to be that. So, you know, some things to look forward to. The Association of Counties EMS package, some of the stuff went through, treatment in place, transport to alternate destination, that's just waiting for the governor's signature. So that could change the outcome of what we do in Allegheny County as well. Today, we still receive private calls from the Village of Cuba, because public health law requires if you call 911, you have to go to an Article 28 facility. But if you call direct, we could take you to Cuba Urgent Care, which there's some folks in Cuba that, that's where they went for the last 80 years of their life, and that's where they'd like to continue to go. So treatment in place and transport to alternate destination is going to be huge. It's going to be huge for us. And Medicaid's going to pay for it. So 70% of our payer mixes Medicare and Medicaid. Currently, you know, a drug overdose from a Medicaid patient currently today is not reimbursable, but hopefully soon, when the governor signs the bill, it will be. And that will help cover some of these burdens that are on these agencies. So, you know, I look forward to working, continuing to work with our partners at E5, and all the volunteer agencies in the county, to do what we do, to provide high-quality ambulance. And to Legislature Rumfeld's point, you know, the other night, we had, there was four ambulance calls in Wellsville's district within 10 minutes of each other. And it just, it's going to be a point where we're not going to have an ambulance for every single call. So we supplied three in a flycar, and went back to the retroactive mutual aid plan, and it took two and a half agencies to get going. So, you know, there's some concerns to that. So, but if you have any questions for us, you know, the other thing, I guess the last thing is, and Bonnie can attest to this, there's been a lot of agencies in this county that could have been wrote off over the years, that have come back, done a good recruitment retention, and they're strong agencies today. So I think it's important to not write any of the volunteers off. It's a life cycle. So, we're seeing it right now with Fillmore. Fillmore is, they got a bunch of new EMTs, they got a bunch more for the class coming this fall. You know, they were a huge concern, but I think in another 18 to 36 months, they're going to be in good shape.
We should always do everything we can to support our volunteers. That's, I mean, that goes back historically, that's been the backbone of our communities. Thank you, Scott.
Absolutely. Questions don't go away yet. There might be a question. I don't know. We've been kind of not question prevalent here today, but maybe. What do you think? Question for Scott?
I'll just comment from Scott's.
Go ahead.
Rushford was one of those agencies that we were down to two volunteers, and we're very close to losing ours, and now we're back to 15. So it is a life cycle. Everybody goes around, and we had help when we needed it. Now we can, you know, we can sustain our own calls. So it does make a difference in that way.
Excellent.
And everybody needs to stop and look, too. Scott and I were on the Estival Festival, and you add some of these other burdens to some of your volunteers, and you aren't going to have your volunteers that are going to cover those long-term events and everything. We were up there, MTS was up there all weekend, I was up there for a little bit, because we had a few things we needed to discuss about it. And so I just want to remind you that there, that the volunteer room is there, but we're also going to have to have these people that can cover other things as well.
Okay. I don't know if this is for Scott or perhaps for Bonnie, but it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that even though our EMS service in the county requires some maintenance and fixing and reorganization a little bit, we provide, correct me if I'm wrong, some of the best EMS services in this county around. We, our response times, as I understand it, are excellent.
Yeah, we're, the county is in great shape. Some counties to our east are not in such good shape. But it's been a long time since we've needed an out-of-county resource to answer 911 calls in this county. I would almost push five or six years since we've needed, needed a out-of-country resource.
Now, thanks to all the volunteers, thanks to MTS, thanks to E5, thanks to all that contribute to making that a good record. I can tell you that time saves lives. Quick response on scene saves lives. And that's what we're all about. This is the deal. So any questions for Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What else we got? We do have time. We don't have to knock off for a... What else we got? We're, we do have time. We don't have to knock off right now, but if there are no questions, this is what I think we're doing. And you correct me if I'm wrong. I think what we should be doing is to digest the information that we've got today. Look at our notes. Remember some of what the folks that have done presentations today have said. We're looking to figure out how to support our new certificate of need while being mindful of the Advisory Board's recommendations. And all of that, when we're done, is going to result, I hope, in a better EMS system. Our next meeting is July 10, 10:00 AM, right here, where we'll get into some of the harder stuff. Anything else?
I would just like to say, we have to remember that this is going to be a team effort when we get all done. It takes all of us to do this.
No lie. That's the truth. And I can tell you that all of us, and I, I can't say me because I'm not an EMT, okay, but all of you nice folks that do this stuff, day in, day out, whether you draw a salary or whether you do it because of the love of your community, you guys rock. I'm telling you. So you, you have my support and my respect. Carissa, something?
I just want to point out that we really need to know from, from the board as we move forward, especially maybe after that July 10th, what model you're looking at, whether you're going to, you know, contract out the whole system and, you know, say, somebody please operate an ambulance system for us that kind of fills in the gaps for the volunteers, or whether the county is going to try to do that on its own and then staff it either with county employees or staffing service. You don't need to pick one of those staffing service employees.
Right.
You just need to pick a theory so that we can apply for your CON. You do not have a CON yet. We need that info to put in the application for it. So just, you know, kind of keep that in mind. We, we need to pick kind of one branch of this tree to go after or another relatively soon so we can get working on that paperwork.
Right. And going back to Jan's question a little while ago, we hope to make some progress on the July 10th meeting. As I said before, this is going to be the hard stuff. Gathering information is interesting and it's, it's what it is. But the next meeting, we're going to have to start swinging the hammer and pounding something together. So... Yes, Mr. Weaver, sir?
If I may, with respect to applying for the, the countywide Munichon, it's important and it will take time to get it through the state. But I caution everyone, do not rush that. Whatever system this county decides to put in place, have the, the framework all set out, have everything pretty much ready to go. Because once you get that countywide CAM, CON, the clock starts. And you have two years to prove that it's working, or you lose it and you ain't getting them back. So you don't make the mistake that another county in this region had, where they got one and then they started work to figure out how to make it work. And they, they almost lost it all because they burned, you know, over a year of their two-year time. And then they were really jumping through hoops trying to prove that it could, it could be made a sustainable and functioning system. So, I mean, certainly get all the paperwork ready to go, but hold off on that submission to the last possible met.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Am I supposed to say good of the order? Let me go on here. Unfinished business. Good of the order. You already know when our next meeting is. I said it 11 times. You are tired of it by now. Okay. I would look for a motion for adjournment, Mr. Rumfeldt.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Healy will second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?